Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Work-Study Session. Item number one is Call to Order. Council meetings can be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Members of the public may also attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. Guidelines for conduct at city council meetings are on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight's meeting. We will now play a video with the proper protocol for ensuring the appropriate conduct at city council meetings.
The city of Tempe welcomes public comment at this time. Disruptive behavior will not be allowed. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to be able to hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any city council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, the mayor will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the call to the audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, the mayor will issue a verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is still no cooperation, the mayor will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is no cooperation after asking and two verbal warnings, then the mayor will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way but only escort them from the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed, the mayor will recess the meeting.
Thank you very much. Next up is item number two, Call to the Audience. The city council welcomes public comment at this time for the issue review session and committee of the whole items on this work-study session agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. I have one card this evening, and it is from David Sokolowski. Mr. Sokolowski, are you available virtually?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name in place of residence. You have three minutes.
My name is David Sokolowski. I live in Tempe. The housing study removed 1,000 units from the shortage without explanation, and we're also excluding people who are being displaced. I know from experience, Tempe's housing navigators tell people to look in other cities. It's working. You can eliminate poverty by forcing people to move, and if there isn't any poverty, there isn't a housing shortage. Tempe isn't planning for the people who will retire, or the homeless, or the students, or the workforce, which is required by SB 1162. If Tempe adds 73,000 jobs by 2050, that could be as many as 12,000 units. Housing is the supply, but students and jobs are the demand. You have to think about the total demand to live in Tempe. The competition for Tempe's homes will remain high, and people will pay more to avoid a long commute. We should assume that prices will increase. Tempe is the kind of city that will brag about paving the streets because it can raise property values. Rising property values has also increased poverty, caused displacement, and blocked people from homeownership. The city is spending more on homelessness than housing, but where are people supposed to go? Tempe hasn't built any affordable housing. In law, Victoria Commons is too little, too late. So Tempe hands off our population to other cities. But by telling people to live in Mesa, we're not actually solving the problem. I think people are going to realize we're not contributing to the state's affordable housing supply, but we are raising rents in other cities. How are you planning to achieve the desired outcome? Tempe doesn't have a housing plan, and the city is going to need a lot more money. It's going to take the city hundreds of years because you're going to need to buy hundreds of acres of land. The bond money will be 300 units, and that wouldn't even cover one year of our current shortage or one year of Tempe's growth. Displacement isn't a long-term solution to the housing crisis. Eventually, Tempe will have to explain to cities like Mesa why the math doesn't add up. It's not going to take very long for people to figure it out. How can Tempe get awards for affordable housing while displacing thousands of families? The report says this trend is expected to continue. What are we going to do to stop it? Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, any other speakers this evening?
No additional cards, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, I will close that portion of the meeting. Just really quickly want to announce too, Vice Mayor Garland actually is virtual this evening, just for the audience here, sitting here in the audience or those watching at home, just want to make sure I noted that. And also, due to unforeseen travel delays, we're going to be moving the next item, 3A, which is the 2024 Utility Rate Study Recommendations, to later on in the agenda to allow the consultant who's presenting this item time to arrive this evening. So once he's here, we will go back and take up item 3A that we're going to be discussing at that time. With that said, that means we will move to item 3B instead, which is University of Las Vegas, Nevada Capstone Program Evaluation of City of Tempe Community Supervision Incentives Program. Welcome.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. I'm Diana Calandros. I'm the manager of the city of Tempe's Community Supervision and Counseling Services, which is within the Community Health and Human Services Department. Tempe's Community Supervision Program works collaboratively with the Tempe City Court and the Tempe City Prosecutor's Office to connect participants to short-term interventions and long-term supports. The goals are to reduce recidivism and increase public safety. Today, Alexis Higgins and Eric Alcantar, who is appearing virtually, are going to be presenting their UNLV Capstone Project that evaluated the Community Supervision Incentives Program, which was implemented in September of 2022 to increase equity and promote behavioral change. I'm now turning this over to Alexis.
Good morning, mayor and council. As Diane said, my name is Alexis Higgins, and I am part of the MPA Capstone Team that ran this evaluation on the Community Supervision Incentives Program. And I'm actually going to turn this over to Eric Alcantar, who will give you a little bit more information about our process.
Hi. Thank you, Alexis, and greetings, mayor and council members. Thank you for having us today. Again, as mentioned, we're with UNLV, and we conducted an analysis on the Community Supervision Program. On the screen is our full team, so is myself, Alexis, and two other members that conducted the analysis. So the mission statement for the Community Supervision Program is positively resolving offenses through education, consequences, and treatment. And the performance measures is in 1.17 community supervision success rates, achieved participant completion rates that are greater than or equal to the rate of Pineale County's diversion program and the rate of 60% of the supervision probation program. So as Diane mentioned, the Community Supervision Program manages diversion program and the probation and home detention programs in Tempe, and work with the various agencies to provide short and long-term support to reduce recidivism and enhance public safety to eligible individuals referred to the municipal court and prosecutor's office. The incentives program, which was created in September '22, was created to allow people were able to help lower-income individuals avoid becoming noncompliant due to the inability to pay the program fees. Incentives are earned by completing different programs or classes, which goes towards the program fees. And with our analysis, we did two, our analysis was broken down into parts, a cost-benefit analysis, which determines the effectiveness of the program, and a survey to measure the social impact. And with that, I'm going to pass it back to Alexis.
Once again, hello, mayor and council members. As we mentioned, there was a two-part method into our evaluation. The first was a cost-benefit analysis over the administrative costs to determine the effectiveness of the program. However, after our initial presentation to staff and other departments, members at UNLV, we determined that it would not only be beneficial to all parties to not only look at the cost-effectiveness in terms of numbers, but also in a holistic approach as it pertains to the participants of the Community Supervision Program and ultimately the citizens of Tempe. In that regard, we went and proceeded with a survey conducted through Google Forms where we, excuse me, where we surveyed over 3,000 participants of the Community Supervision Program, current and former participants. This did not include participants in the program that did not have fees associated with the Community Supervision Program, such as the Making Improvement Permanent Program or Community Diversion Program. Out of these 3,000 participants, we received an average response rate of approximately 3%. This did not account for any emails that were deemed undeliberable or were kicked back due to no longer existing or typos, and also for some participants that were not exactly willing to participate with us. However, we did receive 89 responses out of those, varying from 2020 to 2024 in terms of when they began the Community Supervision Program. We also wanted to know how many of those actually participated in the incentives program because it is not required. In this case, it was pretty much split down the middle. Forty-six of the 89 participated in the incentives program, and 43 did not. Out of those 89, we did also ask if they had successfully completed the Community Supervision Program requirements. In this case, 67 had, 21 were currently enrolled at the time of the survey, and one did not. We also wanted to look at those who did participate in the incentives program to see what classes they found most beneficial. And in this case, we had an overwhelming response of those who participated in the incentives program took classes in related to mental health wellness. So these were classes that were similar to counseling, anger management, along with other types of skills such as cognitive, ethics, and relationships. Now, in this case, we also wanted to see the effectiveness of how the incentives program benefited the participants in terms of gaining employment and maintaining that employment. So in this case, we had asked them if they had been employed prior to the Community Supervision Program and if they were, or, and if they were employed after. In this case, we broke it down to those who participated in the incentives program and those who did not. Now, in this case, you could see that the ones who did not participate in the incentives program more likely did not because they already were employed, so they may not have needed the financial assistance of the incentives program. So with that being said, when you look at the graph from the survey results, you will see that 23 participants who were participants in the incentives program did gain either part-time or full-time employment and maintained it for more than 30 days after the completion of the Community Supervision Program. Now, for any math people in the room, we decided to see if there was an actual statistical correlation to this. In this case, we did a chi-square statistical testing to see that we did actually see a correlation in terms of the p-value that participants who go through the Community Supervision Program and are in the incentives program are more likely to be able to get and maintain employment after completion of the program. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it back over to my colleague, Eric Alcantar, and he will tell you about the cost-benefit analysis in terms of administrative costs.
Thank you, Alexis. So as mentioned, what we looked at was the city costs with the incentives program versus the city costs without the incentives program. And the three major costs that we came up with, so we had the labor cost when somebody returned, if somebody is not able to complete all the requirements and return to probation, that's cost the city $1,510.87. Then there's the Title IX Program, which is the first part of the program that if somebody completes it and pays all their fees, that's $600 in revenue towards the city. And if somebody uses the incentives program, that's $600 in revenue loss over the course of a year. And if somebody does have to return and be on probation, then that's, and they pay all their fees, their monthly fees, that adds up to $1,500 in revenue. Or if they use the incentives program, that's $1,500 in revenues lost over the course of 200, 2 and 1/2 years of probation. Now, with the Adult Diversion Program, that's the Title IX, if somebody, again, at best if somebody pays all their fees, that's $600 in revenue loss. But if somebody is not able to pay that fee and they have to return to court, that costs the city $1,510.87. We mapped out the overall costs in labor for somebody to return to court. And with supervised probation, if somebody does have to return to supervised probation and they pay all their past due fees and their fees throughout the probation, at best the city is going to see a $589 in revenue gain. But at worst, if somebody uses the full incentives program on top of the labor cost, it's going to cost the city up to $3,610.87. So the point of the program was that, what we noticed was that if we can, if the city can prevent the participants from returning to probation, then it would save the city money. And with that, pass it back to Alexis for closing.
So overall, with our findings, we found, as we mentioned earlier, that there is a correlation between participating in the incentives program and obtaining employment. And we believe that with the continuation of the incentives program, this will aid in the program, participant completion of the program, which coincides with city council strategic measures, and lowering the court costs due to the reduction in recidivism, which also coincides with the city council strategic measures. We do have a full report of our findings, along with a literary review and a more detailed view on our survey results and administrative analysis, along with a slideshow. And ultimately, we also would like to extend a thank you to Tim Birch and Diana Calandros for all their assistance throughout this process, as this was a six-month process on our part from the initial starting of this evaluation to where we are today. So we'd like to thank everyone for that and for your time. And at this point, we will take any questions that council may have.
Sounds good. Thank you so much for the presentation. Councilmember Adams?
I love statistics, and I love the chi-square. So good job on that. What is the, can you tell us the percentage of recidivism rate with diversion clients?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that one more time?
Can you tell us the recidivism rate with diversion clients?
So for this particular project, we did not actually ask that in our survey.
Okay.
So that was not something we had measured on that in terms of repeating. However, what you would find in our report is that we did have some anecdotal evidence in terms of comments from participants who did say that they, that some of them did have to go back. But overall, we had more positive feedback in those comments versus not. So while I cannot say specifically, anecdotally, it looks like that number was fairly low.
And how about with probation clients?
For the survey, this was a combination of both. So they did not specify which one they were in, so I could not specifically say to that. If we were given, we had to do this fairly quickly. We ran the survey for approximately six weeks. If we had more time and we were able to do a little bit more detail, we probably could have gone deeper into some of these questions. However, we had the survey consist of only 18 questions, 14 of them pertaining to the actual program and four demographic. So the survey itself took about five to 10 minutes to complete, and normally, the longer survey is, the less likely people are to complete it. So we wanted to get the most responses possible, so we pretty much just essentially focused on these particular items.
Okay, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brandberg?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I was just wondering, do you guys have any idea of why you got such a low response rate? Is that, you know, normal with this population that you were surveying?
Well, so in my professional capacity, I am in charge of conducting business impact solicitations, and my, part of my job is to send out mass emailings for survey responses. It's not uncommon with a high number like this to get minimal responses. Now, in this case, if you were to think of the population that we are surveying, there is, that could possibly play into the reason why they're not responding. As I mentioned, we did not, for purposes of privacy, we did not send out the emails. It was done through the city of Tempe. And they had told us on occasion that they had received a couple responses from former participants who were less than thrilled to have been reminded of their time in community supervision. So that also could say in regards to people just not liking cold calls in general, which is the population, the public, that's its standard. But you also have to keep in mind of the population that we were surveying. They probably have a more sensitive feeling towards this, and they didn't want to think about it too much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Garland?
Hi, thank you, mayor. Diane, I just want to say that I think that this program that you started is absolutely incredible. Thank you so much for the statistics and the report that you guys presented today. I really appreciate when we have these graduates, and some of the graduates come to our council meetings and to tell their stories on how important that this program has been to them and how it has changed their life and how they have gone above and beyond the call of what is necessary for them to be able to complete the program by doing additional classes. So it's nice to see that if we continue this program and we can keep the repeat people from, people from repeating, that it really does pay for itself. And so I think, I appreciate the report. I appreciate what you guys have done, just a big exclamation point on another one of those great programs that the city of Tempe has that, that we've started that really is going to make a difference in the lives of people in our community. So I just want to say thank you all around, and great information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any further comments or questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, mayor and council.
That brings me to item 3C, Housing Inventory and Affordability Analysis. And Irma, that will be you and Christopher. Oh, and Tim's coming too. All right. So I believe two, as in my notes here, Dr. Christian Karen and Chris Martin with Matrix Design Group are also attending virtually in case council members have additional questions. So.
Is this okay?
Oh, it's fine. Good evening, mayor and council. We're here on behalf of Community Health and Human Services to provide you an update on the state of the city's affordability and inventory report. The work is aligned with strategic priorities that you'll see on Slide 1. And to the right of this, do we have the clicker?
I'm sorry.
Okay. And to the right of the slide, you'll see our performance to those targets on the right side of that slide, and staff and consultants will walk you through that. Interestingly enough, it was mentioned earlier that recently Arizona Legislature, Legislative Session passed SB 1162, which now focuses on municipal zoning and processes and housing affordability needs. Just very transparently, the city of Tempe's report is deeper than that required analysis, and Tempe's been leading the way on that level of transparency since 2017. So again, not something we're new to. This is not our first rodeo, and we're excited to give you this update. I am introducing Irma, and Chris will be leading you through this update. They're joined this afternoon by Dr. Christian Karen and Chris Martin with Matrix, who performed this expert review. And those experts, subject matter experts, will be available for you if you have any technical questions for your response as well. And I'll turn it over to Chris.
Thank you. What's before you is the agenda for our item. We'll cover a few, four main areas with you. And I'll spend a few minutes with you to provide some background and describe the methodology used in the study. And then Irma will cover an overview of the study's findings and conclusions. So this is, the previous study was done in 2022 by Matrix, and we contracted again with them in 2024 for this update. The primary objective of the study is to determine Tempe's housing needs, as well as gauge our progress in meeting those needs. To meet the objective, the study focused on three main areas. Those were housing demand, housing supply, and housing affordability. And to understand Tempe's housing need, the study focused on demand. Demand for housing is shaped by demographic and socioeconomic characteristics such as income level and household size. To provide insight into Tempe's housing supply, that's, the study analyzed our housing stock in relation to availability of both rental and for-sale housing to those people that wanted to live in Tempe. For housing affordability, we measured, the study measured a comparison of income levels to price points of both rental and for-sale housing. So these three areas produce the key feature of our, of the study, and that's the housing gap analysis in Tempe. This gap measures both our shortages and our surpluses by income level. Also unique to this study, and unlike previous studies, Matrix was asked to prepare a supplemental analysis of the challenges that students and nonstudents face in terms of their housing. For the methodology to produce that, that key gap analysis and other key findings, Matrix used a mixed method approach. They looked at census data, real estate data, and economic data. So the bulk of where that data came from was the Five-Year American Community Survey, or ACS. The ACS is the premier source of that demographic and socioeconomic housing data. And while the ACS is strong in these areas, it is dated, and so the, the survey data they were looking at was from 2018 to 2022. So knowing this limitation, they supplemented the ACS data with more current real estate data from on permitting, property values, market trends, and from those sources such as CoStar, which focuses on multifamily rental market, Redfin, which compiles real estate sale data from the MLS, or Multiple Listing Service, and the Maricopa County Assessor. Another important feature of the study is the peer communities. You'll see that four peer communities were used in comparison to Tempe. Peer communities closely resemble Tempe in terms of population, income, and the proximity to a major city. That's why they were chosen. I want to note that these peer communities are a little different than the past peer communities that were used. This change was determined to be made because of a better fit in terms of how they compare to us in relation to those items I mentioned. And also to add some additional context for you, we wanted to look at a mix of cities that both have college towns and non-college towns to demonstrate housing challenges for both types of city. And they looked at income information such as MFI, and I want to jump to this slide with you to discuss MFI. Yeah, please. So what we're looking at is Tempe's place in the valley. And what I'd like to focus on is that top box that breaks down two key important distinctions in household income, median family income, or MFI, and medium household income, or MHI. So the, the American Community Survey defines family households as a householder that has somebody that's related to them either through birth or adoption. And then in comparison, a household that could be, not a family household, is somebody that's a roommate or just a single person. So that's the difference between MFI and MHI. And so you can see that Tempe, in terms of MFI, is in line with how the valley is in terms of their family households. And through some aggregated features, family households are typically the longer-term households that stay in cities, and that's why this, this distinction is important. Whereas in relation to the rest of the valley, Tempe kind of lags behind a little bit in multi, median household income, and that's because of the addition of those student households into our population. And so the main takeaway here is that when we look across the valley... And so the main takeaway here is that when we look across the valley, Tempe looks a little bit different based on how you look at household income. And this is really important with the study findings going forward. And one important thing I wanted to leave with you on is that over time, you've heard us talk about area median income. And we'll continue to do so in other presentations. And what that represents is the, what a household would look like across the valley of four. We wanted to focus the study here on median family income because it's very specific to a family of four in Tempe. And we wanted to give you clear and direct information regarding our city in terms of these family incomes. So I'll move it to Irma.
Thank you, Christopher. Thank you, Christopher. So we're going to begin by talking about the state of housing for Tempe homeowners. So what we found is that Tempe is in line with other college towns. About 41% of Tempe households own their home. The median owner-occupied units were largely built, or averaged 1978, making Tempe's home ownership or ownership stock about 15 years older than countywide stock. And the most current data indicate that Tempe's median home price is $485,000. So to afford a home in the City of Tempe at that price point, a household would need to earn $103,000 a year. So that's about 110% of MFI. To a lesser extent than in previous years, Tempe's real estate market continues to favor sellers over buyers. For example, for most of the year, the most, the available inventory was estimated to sell out in three months. A balanced housing market generally has a five-to-six-month supply. The median homeowner in Tempe pays over $1,700 a month in total costs, and that's inclusive of the mortgage, insurance, HOA fees, et cetera. Of course, new homeowners pay much more than that. Tempe homeowners are generally able to meet their monthly costs with relative ease. The median owner-occupied household reported an income of $107,000 a year, and that's significantly higher than the $69,000 that's required to maintain a household expense of $1,700 a month. And finally, households that spend more than 30% of their income on housing costs are said to be cost burdened. If I could take your attention to the top right of the screen here in Tempe, about 23% of homeowners qualify as cost burdened, and this rate has decreased over time. This table compares the number of home, or a number of owner households at each income level to the number of units that they can afford based on current market values. In other words, these are the gaps that would exist if Tempe homeowners or current homeowners were buying their homes today. So adding up all of the households in the affordable range, so in the first three lines of this table, over 10,000 homeowners in Tempe earn less than 80% of median family income, yet only around 5,000 homes would be available to them if they were to purchase today. Accordingly, there is a significant need for owner housing for families earning less than 80% of median family income. So that's about $75,000. That family would earn $75,000 per year. And we would want this, of course, if we want to hope, if we hope to sustain our hometown for all. Similar low-income shortages exist throughout Maricopa County as well as our identified peer communities. And interestingly, there is also a deficit at the luxury end of the spectrum, which encompasses Tempe's highest earners. Now for renters, the remaining 59% of Tempe households are renters. As of early 2024, the average asking rent was $1,662,000, or 62 a month, not $1,000 a month. On the left, the hourly wage required to afford units of varying sizes are here. Note that all of these are significantly higher than Tempe's minimum wage of $14.35, which is to increase in January, I believe, to $1,470. From late 2021 to early 2024, real average rent decreased in Tempe from $1,902 to $1,662. Vacancy rates also fell during this time. We attribute these developments to the surge in new construction that began a few years ago. Since early 2022, Tempe has consistently had over 3,000 units under construction. And as the graph to the right show, Tempe is outpacing its peer communities as well as Maricopa County in apartment construction. So next, I'm going to show you how rent levels vary through the city. This, the map is a little bit hard for you to see, but really what I want you to take from it is that it classifies multifamily properties by average rent. And the larger the circle, the more expensive the rent is. So just at a glance, you can see that rents 2,000 a month or higher are most common in the neighborhoods closest to ASU. This analysis measures the rental housing deficit or surplus by income level. And as you can see, the very low-income category of below 30% of median family income within the green brackets faces the largest shortage. The shortage facing, facing these households who earn less than $28,000 annually is estimated to be over 8,000 units. And so for context, the average annual social security benefit a senior receives is less than $22,000 a year. And for those on social security disability benefits, the average is even less, at $17,000 a year. At the same time, there's a shortage of rental housing for households earning 120% of the median family income or $113,000 of income a year, as demonstrated by those categories in red brackets. And this means they're competing, this group of earners are competing with more moderate-income Tempeans for the same units, which drives up prices. This graph demonstrates how Tempe's rental housing gaps have evolved over the years. So if you recall, as Christopher said, the ACS data that is used in the survey is over a five-year period, and the most recent version is 2018 to 2022. So as such, much of the new development that's taken place is not reflected in this graph. Still Tempe shortage at the Affordable One level, under 30% of median family income, reduced about 1,000 units from 2020 to 2022 as the number of households at the below MFI level, 30% MFI level, has also fell. So our incomes have increased. And a note with respect to ASU and housing availability. According to the 2022 ACS, or American Community Survey, 45% of ASU students fall below the poverty line. And the poverty line for individuals is $15,225 a year. This compares with 11% of Tempe's non-student population. So college-age renters are also much more likely to be cost burdened. 65% of renters under the age of 25% devote more than 30% of their income to rent. And for older renters over the age of 25, the cost burden rate is 24%. Note that this is nearly identical to the 23% of cost burden rate observed amongst homeowners. So nonetheless, because non-students outnumber students, most of those who are challenged by housing costs and thereby are at risk of displacement are non-students. And in terms of affordability, Tempe's non-student population is not uniquely challenged nor disadvantaged, and Tempe closely resembles other non-college towns in terms of affordability challenges. So our conclusions in reviewing the data is that, as in previous updates, the data shows that renters face more acute affordability challenges in our city. The findings support the view that Tempe's long-term population is not uniquely challenged by housing costs. In fact, Tempe's non-students fare about as well, if not better, than non-students elsewhere. The number of very low-income rental households, so those below 30% of MFI, has reduced over time. And as such, the housing shortage impacting this demographic has also declined. The need for affordable owner housing, on the other hand, extends to the 80% MFI level, which again includes households that earn less than $76,000 a year. And our hometown for all innovation is working, especially in the rental market. There's been a dramatic increase in the number of units coming online, which has helped to stabilize prices and our inventory. This concludes our presentation, and we are available for questions.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a really informative presentation, and it really shows that we're making progress and we're working in the, in the right direction. So I just, I appreciate you putting all the numbers together and, and all that and really showing how well we're doing. And Tempe's been dedicated to this with hometown for all for years now, and it's working. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams.
Thank you. Councilmember Hodge?
Yes, I want to echo. Thank you so much for the presentation and all the work and diligence you put in in bringing that to us. My question is, because I kind of heard what someone said earlier, can we have more of a breakdown of the cities around us? It doesn't have to be now. I mean, just at another later time, that, you know, around us and what their average is and what it looks like compared to what it is in Tempe. I know we did it kind of to the college town, but I would love to see our regional area, how we break down in that area.
Thank you. Councilmember Hodge?
Thank you.
Sounds good. Anyone else?
Hi, Mayor. This is Vice Mayor Garland.
Yes, please.
Hi, Irma. Thank you so much for this information and presenting it in this way. I have a question in your, in the executive summary from, from the report that you guys presented. Can you just explain again? On here, it says remarkably, units under construction represent nearly 10% of Tempe's commercial multifamily inventory, suggesting the city is well-positioned to reduce rental shortages. Is that 10% of what is coming? Is that what that, this is one kind of?
Thank you.
Get an explanation on that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Garland. I am going to defer to Dr. Karen and Mr. Martin, who are on the phone.
Yep, we are here. So thanks so much for your question. That 10% number, the way it's calculated is it's just the number of units of multifamily units under construction divided by the total number of multifamily units.
Okay. So if I read that paragraph again, I think I might understand that a little bit better than. Okay, thank you. And then one other question, Irma, I'm not sure if I could answer this, but at one point, I thought, like a year ago, we had a listing total of how many apartments, the units that we had under construction. And I thought the number was, from what we have approved that hasn't even hit ground yet, that we were around like 2,500 or something like that? I was just wondering if somebody had a number.
Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Garland, if I could have a minute, please?
Thank you.
Do you want to, do you want to?
Vice Mayor, would you like the number for building certificate of occupancy or building permits issued?
I think it's building permits issued. I'd like to, you know, what is, what have we been, what have we already approved that's coming, that will be coming that we can look at and say this is how many units we know are coming for the city soon?
So between the period of December 1st, 2023, and November 30th of 2024, building permits issued for the number of units was a total of 1,327 units for multifamily, and 48 were issued for single-family.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Garland, that's all your questions?
That is it for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much. Anyone else from the council? Any further comments or questions? All right. I don't either, actually. So thank you so much. Thank you for all the hard work, as always.
Thank you.
That brings me to item 3D, Streetcar Locally Preferred Alternative, Rio East-Dobson Extension. Let's see. Eric Iverson, Sam Stevenson, Brian Passaro, Shelley Seiler.
Good afternoon, evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Eric Iverson, Transportation Sustainability Director. I'm here with Sam Stevenson, our Transit Manager. We are also joined by our Deputy Director, Shelley Seiler of our department, and then Marty Zeke and Brian Passano from Valley Metro for any questions that we might have after this presentation. We are here tonight to share with you kind of the latest on what's happening with current streetcar as well as a proposed extension to it. This is part of the process that we worked through of our federal funding and federal processes for rail projects of this magnitude. So this is a, we are asking for your concurrence to move forward with an action tonight. We'll go, we'll go through what that is. But we are here asking for, for that, for that movement. We are going to give a little bit of, of current streetcar status and how that's performing, as well as then go into what the action is that we're asking for, for this, what's called the locally preferred alternative for the Rio East-Dobson Extension. Want to mention, too, of course, that we have Valley Metro here, our partners on this project. We are also working with City of Mesa, where this project will connect to, and we'll kind of detail what that looks like. And then finally, we'll go through what our next steps are after, after we go through the information. Of course, all of our, our work is attached to your performance measures that you have adopted. And the two that you see on the screen here, the 20-minute city and our transit satisfaction are what we look at for how we measure the success of our public transit system. With that, I'm going to hand over the next slides to Sam.
Thanks a lot, Eric. So I'm sure you're all very familiar with the streetcar that operates today in downtown. The Three Mile Starter Line opened back in May of 2022. And since that time, we feel the performance has been really impressive. So we're currently trending at around 760 annual boardings. That exceeds the number that was projected for opening. And the project cost around $200 million to build. That was funded through a combination of federal, regional, and local dollars as well. And then currently, we're spending around $7.5 million to operate the service. The majority of that funding comes from our local Tempe Transit Sales Tax, Dedicated Tax. I mentioned the, the system that currently only operates within downtown. I want to point out a couple of nuances that sort of delineate streetcar from light rail, and that is that streetcar generally uses smaller vehicles. The platforms are smaller as well. It can operate in mixed use with traffic as well as in a dedicated guideway. Basically, the projects are, you know, more easy to integrate with the built environment, like our urban core. And streetcar projects around the country are generally known to promote, really promote, and also to catalyze economic development as well. It ties in really well with our other modes of transit service, like bus, light rail, and orbit in downtown. Currently, streetcar operates every 20 minutes. We do have aspirations to increase that, improve upon that, to run the cars every 15 minutes next year. Currently, the system is free. We also plan to implement a fare next year as well. It'll be a dollar per trip. Many of you will recall seeing this map. This was presented to council back in 2020. Really, it's the result of our Tempe-Mesa streetcar feasibility study. And what that project did was really identify potential corridors for streetcar expansion and prioritize those corridors as well. And so from that project and several others, two projects were advanced into the region, the current version, current version of the region's transfer, MAGS Momentum Plan, which is Regional Transportation Plan. What that plan does is identify and prioritizes large investment projects looking out over the next 20 years or so. So there was a project to extend the streetcar east from Marina Heights along Gruislado Parkway to Dobson Road in Mesa, and then head south on Dobson to Main Street. And then beyond that, a potential future phase of streetcar to extend further into Mesa and serve their Fiesta District as well. And really, our, that brings us to really the ask tonight. And what we're recommending is the very next phase of streetcar, the project, which is called the Rio East-Dobson Extension Project. The project, again, I mentioned, would extend east along Gruislado to Dobson, and then extend south into Mesa. And it would be a 4.4-mile project, very close partnership with the City of Mesa and Valley Metro. And this phase of the project is really what's called the locally preferred alternative. It's a very formal step in the process that would then qualify Tempe to apply for and potentially receive additional waves of federal funding to help advance this project through design and engineering as well. We will be back to you at a later time to discuss some of the finer details as we, as we learn, learn more about where streetcar, streetcar could potentially operate within the streets, where the stop locations are, and things like that. And as with all of our projects here in Tempe, you know, public involvement is a critical component. We've held a series of stakeholder engagement sessions with major stakeholders along the alignment, like sessions with major stakeholders along the alignment, like Tempe Marketplace, Vestar, ASU Novus, and the South Pier Development as well. We've also held public houses in Tempe and Mesa. We're working really closely with internal city departments, like Traffic Engineering, Economic Development, and also Neighborhood Services as well. And we did receive support from our Transportation Commission earlier this week regarding the, the locally preferred alternative. So, at this point, I'm going to hand it back over to Eric. He's going to talk more about the LPA and our next steps.
Thanks, Sam. So, a couple more slides. Yeah, again, we are here asking for your concurrence to move forward with the technology of streetcar moving eastward on Rios Lotto Parkway into Mesa. So, that's what is called the locally preferred alternative. And we are asking for that to move forward to formal adoption next week at your formal council meeting. We do want to mention other actions that have happened prior to tonight. City Council of Mesa voted earlier this week to support advancing this project in their community. Transportation Commission, we had two days ago in our city, also supported advancing this forward. And then, again, we'll be back, or you will have a formal vote on this, assuming that you advance this tonight. You'll have a formal vote next week to formally adopt that, that locally preferred alternative. There will then be the series of meetings through Valley Metro. Our city manager and Councilmember Adams sit on the various committees that will see this go through the Valley Metro boards, and then through the MAG process. I know our Vice Mayor Garland, our Deputy Director, Shelley Seiler, and the mayor sit on those, those MAG boards that will also see this action come forward. So, we are asking for the, the concurrence on this, moving forward with the LPA. We also want to mention that as we look forward to funding this, this is not funded for construction. But we have our, however, early this year received, in partnership with Valley Metro and Mesa, the Raise Grant, which is a federal grant to do our, the next phase of this, of this project. So, that's a good sign. We got that money from the federal government. And then we'll keep working with MAG and our partners on the funding of Prop 479 that just passed in November, and what that means for funding for this project in the future. With that, open up for questions.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Councilwoman Adams?
Yes, thank you for the excellent presentation. This is very exciting. I want to publicly thank Representative Greg Stanton for getting, helping us get the money for the planning process. So, that's, that's huge. I'm excited to extend the streetcar. This will be a huge boost to our community. These extensions really lead to a lot of development projects. As we've seen, where light rail has been increased Apache, the Apache area by $3 billion in, in developments. And that's just that area. Cul-de-sac would be probably another perfect project for this area, since they have all the different transportation options. Just, I just kind of was thinking about that. And, you know, we want to get people out of their cars and onto the streetcar and onto light rail. So, this really helps with that project. As Vice Chair of Valley Metro Rail, we've been talking about this for a long time. So, it's very exciting to see it come, come to fruition. So, thank you so much for your presentation. Excellent, as usual.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Hodge?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I always believe that when we extend our transportation, other than cars alternative, it always, it always helps out the community and the families. My question is, I heard you say how much we have going in. How much is, if we don't get the grants, how much would Tempe be on the, you know, the hook for, is what I want to say? Or how much would that cost us directly?
Well, we're, a lot. Thank you, Councilwoman Hodge, Mayor. We, we don't have cost estimates on this project right now. We can go off of our experience with previous project. It was about $75 million a mile. We would rely heavily on regional and federal funding to make this project happen.
Okay, thank you. And my last question is, I know when the light rail, and I know that we probably be using a lot of the same tracks, but when the light rail went through, it cost a lot of businesses kind of a hiccup to close and be open. Is that going to be a first C situation with this? Or is it going to be okay because the tracks are already laid? Just?
Great question. We, we have many years to prepare for that because we're not near construction yet. But thank you, Councilmember Hodge, Mayor and Council. Certainly, there's always a team, you know, our team here at the city that works on all sorts of public engagement, neighborhood services to make sure the businesses and our neighbors are doing okay during construction. We have a team usually with, works with Valley Metro that is assigned as part of the construction team that works on impacts and mitigating that with all of our adjacent businesses. So, we feel like we did a really great job with that, with the light rail project and with the streetcar project. So, we'd want to repeat that with this extension. Yeah. But it's a great, great point. We want to protect our businesses.
Okay. I've got to get to.
Okay.
I'll come, I'll come back.
Okay, I just want to.
Are you still good, or?
Yeah, I'm just want to say one thing. I, I definitely support it, but thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Councilwoman Weber?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Eric, I want to say, like, I'm super excited that it's actually going by the New Cubs Spring Training Facility, because I think that's going to help downtown Tempe a lot, because they attract a lot of people during spring training over there. But I do have a question. I mean, has anybody talked or thought about asking the developers that are building, you know, buildings and building developments along what is going to be this potential track to help with the cost of some of the stops? And my second question is, since streetcar right now is free currently, do you guys see an impact on ridership once we actually start charging?
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead with the councilmember.
Amber, I'll take that one first. We, realistically, we do. You know, anytime we implement a fare, we tend to see a decline in ridership. To what extent, we're not quite sure. We do feel, we're working closely with ASU on potential options to expand the U-Pass program. We know a lot of the ridership today is students. So, we think that that could be something that could help. The other side of the coin is it's going to provide, you know, really a critical subsidy to help us continue to operate that service. I mentioned it's $7.5 million a year currently. You know, our costs do increase year over year. So, we, we recognize that fares are an important piece of our revenue portfolio.
And regarding the, the question about funding and possible, what we would call public-private partnership, PPP, we did do that with the current streetcar that's functioning now. Something that, as we get deeper into understanding the costs related to this, would be a conversation that you all could direct us to initiate, but certainly something that could be on the table to, to talk about. We do, however, continue to work with the stakeholders as, as we're developing the design of the project, and we continue to, when there's new developments, get square footage or ride away in front of the new building so that we have room to build streetcars. So, we're trying to help alleviate some of those land costs that might be associated with the project. So, there already is some kind of work with the development to help with the project. Yeah.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Garland?
Thank you. I look at transportation, I think I've always looked at it this way, is that it's an equity issue and an equity concern. So, being able to offer more possibilities for ridership for people instead of vehicles, I think is a wonderful thing for us to be able to do. So, you are asking for consensus, and I support this, this project. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Adams?
Yes, I, I know that when we were building light rail, we did do a lot to help the businesses along the way. Eric, can you expand on that at all? Because I do remember reaching out and working with the businesses.
Yeah, we, from individualized outreach with any, you know, as, like, sort of like, I would portray it as what we're doing with Mill Avenue right now and the construction that's happening with, with our downtown. We're going door-to-door. There is, again, part of what's built into the budget, a team that is put together with the consultant team and with Valley Metro to provide that door-to-door customized solutions while we're going through construction to help alleviate any impacts that might happen. There's loan programs that are a part of the package or have historically been part of the package, I would assume, will be part of this. Loan programs that can help assist with the business that might be struggling during construction. So, those are some of the options that are available, and I would expect that we would entertain all those during construction of this.
Okay, that's important, because I want our businesses to succeed and to survive these kinds of projects. Because in the end, it'll bring in a lot more revenue and, and increase the business's value. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hodge.
Okay. My last question is, you know, in the city of Tempe, we do bus passes for our youth. Will this include into it, like, how the, how the train and the buses are? Or would this be separate? Because I know it's not, it's free now, but I know you're looking to continue to do a dollar. So, is that all connected?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Councilmember Hodge. And candidly, that's part of the reason why we don't have a fare currently, is because we've been waiting for the ideal time. The region's currently upgrading the fare collection system. We didn't want to install the legacy system just to turn around a few months later and, you know, have to remove and reinstall the new equipment. So, to answer your question, yes, the system will be seamless with bus and rail. You know, our youth transit pass will, will, will work on the streetcar, as will all the other fare media in the valley that's currently out there.
That sounds so good. Thank you so much.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Anyone else? Any further comments or questions? All right. Seeing done. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That brings me to item 3E, results of the Strategy Tool for Aligning Resources for Tempe, otherwise known as the START tool. And I see Wydell Holmes coming up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Happy to be here. This is a return visit from our Work-Study Session presentation on November 19th. I'm Wydell Holmes with the Strategic Management and Innovation Office. And just wanted to remind that we center our performance-led budgeting process around the five strategic priorities set by council and operationalized by over 100 performance measures. With council direction tonight, we're going to be asking for your direction in regards to the five accelerated models that rose on our START tool. These measures would be a hyper-focus by staff and our partner agencies and other strategy partners for achievement and acceleration over the next year. And again, the START tool, not a funny acronym, it's actually intentional to start our budget process. And we want to align our resources for Tempe appropriately for the outcomes that we're looking for. And so, really, this is the beginning of our budget process for both our capital improvement program, as well as our operating budget for '25, '26. With performance-led budgeting, we look at accelerating and hyper-focusing on particular performance measures. When we do that, we collaborate with our strategy partners. That could be both internal departments, outside agencies, both locally, nationally. One of the primary focuses of our strategy is to shift our resources. So, we're not looking at strategies where we would need and, and require additional funding. For example, we may want to accelerate a performance measure by leveraging artificial intelligence or leveraging the stakeholder groups that we have in regards to housing. So, we look for other ways when we develop these strategies and not for additional funding. Your direction tonight will tell staff and our partners on where we really should put our energies more so over the next year. We'll still take care of all of our other performance measures, but this really puts a higher emphasis on at least three to five measures. With that, I wanted to thank council and mayor for your START tool participation and the results that we were able to achieve. I know you had a shorter period this year, so it was very much appreciated by staff. The five top performance measures identified in the START tool were ending homelessness, our housing inventory ratio, alongside our feeling of safety in our neighborhoods, our police services satisfaction, and our payment quality index. Three of those performance measures were also accelerated in this last year. These five performance measures received at least four council members providing points across the START tool. So, right there, that's the beginning of where you already have some consensus. They also were, received the highest total when we averaged all of the points distribution for that performance measure. We also have the highest averages with these five measures, as well as the highest meaning score. And just as a reminder, these totals and this point distribution is not an allocation of funding. It is really just to give staff direction on where we can start to creating even more accelerated strategies and come back to you in March with those. So, again, not an appropriation. It's not an allocation of funding. It's strictly a tool, similar to what we offer our community very soon, to share what their priorities are in regards to how we appropriate resources for Tempe. With that, we're, we'll continue strategies to building on our ending homelessness. We know that that's an aspirational measure. We also know we're making progress. And so, we want to continue on the progress we've seen through our winter point-in-time count and our summer time point-in-count. Additionally, you just heard tonight some of the balance and equilibrium that we've established with our housing inventory ratio. So, by accelerating that, we'll be looking for new ideas and innovations around that, again, building upon our Hometown for All initiatives. Feeling of Safety in our Neighborhood, we actually track this on a monthly basis. It's a sentiment score. So, we get real-time, almost real-time data. And you can see that we're starting to achieve on a more frequent basis, just over this last calendar year. New scores will be coming in at the end of December. So, this will be very important to not only working with our police department, but we have other partners across the city, whether it be our Neighborhood Services Program, our Code Enforcement. So, we don't look at these as solely measures by one department. We look at it as a collaboration across the whole organization. And then, coming in fourth in your results, was Police Services Satisfaction. And this is exciting in regards to continuing a three-year trend in regards to our community satisfaction with police services. And as you know, in our November presentation, we are at least 20 points above national cities that we benchmark against. So, we, this is exciting in regards to continuing that acceleration. And then finally, Payment Quality Index. Being able to, over the next four years, reach a score of 82, which is a score of excellence for a high-performing city like Tempe. Without our bond, we would not be able to do that. But we also have some other strategies where we can make sure that we're making it even a greater impact on our community in a positive way. And with that, with council direction, our next steps will be to develop these acceleration models and measurable strategies, bringing those back to you at the Work-Study Session on March 20th. And then also, because we want to keep a cadence of focus, we have our Tempe Accelerates Program Team that we lead each month for these accelerated models so we don't lose focus throughout the year. We continue the execution of our strategies. So, with that, I'll open it for questions and direction.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Council, any comments or questions on this item? Yeah, there may be fewer, since we submitted all the materials for it, I guess. So, everybody, everybody comfortable moving forward what you saw this evening?
Yes, yes.
All right.
I thank you for sticking with the best practice of three to five things to focus on and achieve with excellence. So, I appreciate that. And again, appreciate your friendly competition of who could complete the tool quicker. So, appreciate that.
And I won.
I told you I'd get that in.
I lost.
Councilwoman Hodge. So, thank you, Mayor and Council.
Not that anyone's really, you know, taking score or anything. So, thank you, Wydell. Appreciate it. All right. That means we're going to move back now, actually, to item 3A, 2024 Water, Wastewater, Stormwater, and Solid Waste Rate Study Recommendations.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Tara Ford, the Public Works Director, and I'm here with Andy Burnham from StanTech Consulting. And we're here tonight to present to you the 2024 Water, Wastewater, Stormwater, and Solid Waste Rate Study Recommendations. We did a thorough study, and what I want to point out with this study is that the intent of the rate study is to evaluate the cost to provide water, wastewater, and stormwater, and solid waste-related services, each individually we look at. And then after that, we determine the revenue that's required to maintain the financial stability of the utility. And then after that, we recommend what rate adjustments are needed for each one of the utilities. Thank you. And with that in mind, the city council priorities and the public works performance measures that guide the rate study are listed here on the screen. And then I'm going to talk a little bit about the rate study objectives. So, our main rate study objectives are the funding requirements. And these are the funding requirements that, that are needed to operate each of the utilities that I spoke about. And also, we have to look at the regulatory requirements, especially for water right now. We have to take that into consideration when looking at these funding requirements. And then we make cost-to-service adjustments. And then from there, the current service characteristics, and what I mean by that is the demand use profiles for each one of our customer classifications. So, we have single-family, multifamily, industrial, commercial. So, we look in-depth at each one of those. And we have a really good tool that we use here in Tempe, AMI, that you all know of, the Advanced Metering Infrastructure. And with that, it's real-time monitoring of the use of water. And we can use that. It's defensible. It's definitive. And it's, it's a great, then we're not averaging or guessing at what consumptions are for each one of those customer classifications. So, what we've determined from this study is that the additional funding that is required for water, we determined it's 7.7 million, wastewater 5.9 million, and solid waste 750,000. Now, the main driver between, for water being 7.7, the main thing are the regulatory requirements. We're putting in a lot of time and effort and also, you know, improving our infrastructure at our water treatment plants, our well sites, in order to comply with the order to comply with these new and emerging regulatory requirements and the current ones that we have. And then this also includes operating the utility and also maintaining each one of the utilities. Solid waste is low, as you can see, which is good. And that's because we've taken a big look at solid waste and we became, and we do this across the, across Public Works, that one of the things we did is we became more efficient in still operating and still keeping the compost program. But we outsource it now because it's more cost-effective for the city. We saved a lot of money there, but the residents don't even notice. We're still picking up all their green organics, just like we were, bulk green cans. But you can see the impact it's already had on solid waste. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Andy.
Thank you, Tara. So from here, what I'd like to do is just help communicate and help you understand the impacts to customers of these additional funding requirements. And starting with your largest customer classification, as Tara mentioned, single-family customers. And so what's shown here are kind of three holistic looks at the total utility bill for single-family customers. So this includes water service, the first one on the left, at 5/8 inch meter, which is a very typical meter size for single-family homes, 8,000 gallons of water use, 6,400 gallons of wastewater, and a standard solid waste service with a 96-gallon container, and also stormwater fee included. And so this shows that total utility bill for all those services, both current and then after an increase, accounting for those additional funding requirements, and that proportional allocation just to single-family. And I'll point out that this one on the left, this isn't a low, medium, and high scenario. That one on the left is really the majority of your customers. You have about 57% of your customers use 8,000 gallons or less per month. So that's the majority of your customers. And with the rate structure and the way the increases work, that $7.87 increase, that's at that 8,000 gallon level. So bills below that amount are actually going to increase by lower dollar amounts. The range is generally about $2 to $3 to $8. This is kind of that, at that 58% level. So again, from this level and down, you can easily say about 58% of our customers are, our bills are going to increase by about $3 to $8. That's the main takeaway. But we also wanted to look at just higher-volume users and be cognizant of those potential impacts as well, not just smaller users and average users. So we looked at an above-average user, same meter size, but with more water usage for irrigation. You have about 82% of your bills at this level or less. So this is a pretty high bill when you look at the distribution. And so the current bill today for all services combined is $126. That would increase by about $13 to cover those funding requirements. And then the large user at the right, this is getting into probably our top 1% of accounts. So this is not a very typical type of a bill in our community, but we wanted to show just the large user impacts. And you can see that total bill today is about $366. And with the allocation of these funding increases, would increase by about $48. Again, this is across the entire utility bill. And so what's important to understand is not just the impacts to your typical and different types of users, but I think it's also to have some, important to have some context in terms of how you compare regionally. So we've worked with staff to put together just kind of a comparison where we stack all of these components of the utility bill together for several communities in the area. So we added and color-coded each of these bars so you could see comparatively what's the water, wastewater, solid waste, and stormwater costs in Tempe currently and proposed versus others in the area. We've tried to factor in as many increases as we know about for other agencies that will be happening in January or next March for Phoenix, as per their current ordinance. But rates are continuously changing. In fact, you've probably heard about the town of Gilbert considering wastewater rate increase options. And depending upon how they pay for capital, it could be a 95% increase on wastewater rates. That's not factored in here. So there's big movement, there's regular and ongoing discussions with utility rates. But what we've done here is, and hopefully given you some understanding that with what we know today, you're very comparable in cost. With what we have to do with our funding requirements, we anticipate you're also going to be one of the lower-cost providers in the area as well for all three of these user types.
Do you know, Councilwoman Bradus?
I'm sorry. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I got excited. I got overexcited. Just, where will we be then as compared to the other cities? Because that comes up a lot. That's why I'm like dying to ask the question.
So we've, we've tried to factor in the increases that we know about as best we can, council member. There's just a few others that are happening right now that we just don't know where they're going to land, like Gilbert. So these reflect the prospective rates that we best can anticipate today, going into effect at about the same time as these rate adjustments would be, which is next April. So it's as good as we can do today. But the Gilbert one is just kind of pretty out there in the news right now. And so we just couldn't put that in. And it's a big number, too. So we need to make sure they approve it before we put that in some charts.
Okay, maybe we can come back in the future and just have an updated.
Sure. Yeah, and this data does, we do try to help maintain it. And I know the staff does as well, because it's, you know, very helpful to have this context.
Yes. I mean, Tempe's known to really pay attention to the budget and, and costs. So, good job.
Yep.
Thank you.
Of course. And so the conversation, you know, is certainly, single-family is a focal point. But the cost allocation process, as Tara mentioned, looks at all customer classes. So that 7.7 million of additional funding, we distribute that across all of the different customer types and, and really residents and businesses within the community, based on industry-accepted practices. So the American Waterworks Association talks about how you should allocate costs based upon those usage characteristics. And so here in Tempe, we are also not just good stewards of the resources, but we're data-rich. With that AMI system, we have really good information that can inform these cost allocations. And we've been using that for a couple of years, which is why you generally see the allocation of these additional increased requirements are pretty proportional across all customer classes that you see on this chart. On the wastewater side, there's a similar book from another industry group that also identifies a process for allocation. And so we've been following that, but then also been following your data. And again, in 2022, you did a strength and return flow study to try to really understand your customers' wastewater characteristics, how much flow they're sending back to us, and what's the character of it, because that drives our treatment costs. And so we've continued to factor that into the allocations as well. And so we continue to build on and leverage that study to enhance the outcomes and the allocations each time. But again, you can see generally proportionate increases across all customer classes for wastewater. Before we leave water and wastewater, I do want to talk about another service. So there's, part of our customer base receives non-treated flood irrigation water through canals or separate distributions. This comes from, and is coordinated by Tempe through our flood irrigation program that coordinates the delivery of that flood irrigation water from the Salt River Project that serves about 800 homes and then about 17 parks in the community. However, the costs for this program have not been fully captured in the rates really since the program's inception. And so one of the things that we wanted to look at is what would it take to address the flood irrigation rates to reflect the full cost of that program operating in capital costs? Because today, we're capturing less than 50% of that. And so, being thoughtful about customer impacts, we looked at a phasing program to phase in that increase equally over two years to get that cost, that service to its full cost over the two years. It's about $25 on the monthly bill for flood irrigation service, and 25 in a similar amount in fiscal '26. The service is billed semiannually, so customers will see this on bills two times per year. And another point to keep in mind with flood irrigation, there's no sewer charges with this. This is just a separate service for flood irrigation that some customers receive. And then lastly, solid waste is also part of the study. And again, following the allocation of disposal and collection costs led us to a fair and equitable distribution of these costs between residential and commercial services. Again, fairly similar allocations. Commercial's a slightly larger increase than residential in this instance. But again, it's very data-driven, based on size and number of containers, frequencies of pickup, and the size of those containers. And so with that, I'd like to turn it back to Tara just to talk a little bit about next steps before we open it up for further questions and answers.
Yeah. So the next steps, as you can see on the screen, will have the Notice of Intention will be December 19th, that Council will be determining if we go forward with looking at these rates, not adopting them at that time, but looking at them. And then we have a public meeting scheduled January 8th, and that will be at the library. Commission meetings that we are planning to attend are January 20th, and that is Sustainability and Resilience Commission. And then February 5th is the Neighborhood Advisory Commission. And then public hearing and the consideration for the adoption of rate will be at the February 20th Council meeting. And then if adopted, these rates will go into effect April of 2025. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to you if you have any questions.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Councilwoman Brach?
So this is way in advance. I just want to have a suggestion. If we, if it's adopted, right, is there any possible way that when we do, I know, because I know you guys are going to put it out in the water bill and in the letters, is there anything that we can add to attach with sustainability? Because you go in that commission to make sure maybe that they can give some ideals on how to lower the rate, like the, you know, the flush of the toilet during the percentage, or just the water cost, when the best time to wash clothes, all that stuff, just to be added in it at the same time. And I mean, not just one time, but each time that we've sent it out, send out how we can help with costs. Because I know it affects, but some people, they can't, that $8 is, is a changer for them. So I just want to make sure that when we do send it out, that we do give some options and some ideals on how to conserve their, their water.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. And we can also promote our water resources, water conservation program that we do, because we do do free water audits at people's homes. And we can, and we go out there, we can educate them on how to be more efficient. We look for leaks. We can do that as well. And then, like you're talking about, the Sustainability Commission, we can do it then as well. And then we, and then update also our communication, our outreach that we send out on water conservation as well.
Yes. And I don't know, maybe Shona Warner can work with the neighborhoods so it can get out through the HOAs and stuff, too, also. So just making sure we hit every avenue of trying to get people. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. I got to go to Councilwoman Chin first. So, Councilwoman Chin?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. It's always hard to come up and let us know that unfortunately, rates may need to go up. And I have to tell you, I appreciate you are always, Tara, are always good about providing efficiency areas. And the whole team, your entire team, has been really conscientious about working that in in the planning, that the solid waste is a great example of using methodology that can help offset. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Chin.
Thank you. So what, Councilwoman Bradus?
Yeah, it's just, I want to put in a plug for the Water Savings Program that you offer. I've had them come out and look at that property. And we found, you know, a lot of leaks and things like that. So, and then also, they also notify you when the water's like running continuously. So you, like right away. So I would really strongly encourage our residents to do that, because it'll save a lot of money. And, and it will be, I think, very helpful for, for our residents and promoting sustainable practices. Because water is one of our most precious resources. So we need to do everything we can to promote saving it. So thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Garret?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Tara, I'm just looking at the flood irrigation cost service requirements. It's amazing to me how much the city has, looks like, has been absorbing the cost of this for our community. But I, is this cost increase include repair and maintenance on the irrigation system? Or is this just water? What is, what does this all take care of?
Yes, Vice Mayor Garret. It includes the maintenance as well. So it's the maintenance, the delivery of the water, staff time, all of that to run the program.
Okay. I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brach?
Thank you so much. I noticed that you said, you know, we're going to be looking at the parks and when we go to irrigation. I know that a lot of the parks are attached to schools. Is that going to be something that you add in there to reach out to the schools with their irrigation also? Because I've seen water just flow, you know, and it's coming from our schools. So I just want to know, is that going to be something we can?
And that would be something Craig Hayden, I think he's here, is he here? That they work there. So Parks works closely with the schools on the irrigation and the irrigation schedule. So they coordinate that, but we can definitely talk to the schools more. Craig?
I can't hear you.
Yes.
As we, as we know, the Craig is always here.
The Craig is here.
Thank you, Mayor. Craig Hayden, Community Services Director. While we do have a lot of schools next to our parks, they are scheduled separately. We do take deliveries at the same time just for efficiency's sake. But a lot of times, those are scheduled directly through the school district. So it's nothing that we manage directly, but certainly, we schedule some of the fields that we have activities on. So we work with them on some of that scheduling use, just on the programming.
All right. Thank you so much. And I just have one more last question. It's not a question, I guess it's a suggestion. Lot of us on Council, we have newsletters. So if you put like maybe a one-pager together, that we can also help spread the information when it's time for, for our constituents to understand and maybe get just a feel of it before it happens.
Definitely. We'd love to do that.
And I just want to say, great presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brandberg?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for the presentation. That was awesome. I think whenever we sat down one-on-one and did the flood irrigation piece, is just the Tempe residents that are contracting with the city.
This is correct.
For flood irrigation. It's not the ones that are contracting directly with SRP, correct?
Correct. They run their own rates, correct.
Excellent. All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none. We've got the schedule here in front of us. So thank you again. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Brings us to item 3F, Illegal Fireworks in Tempe Neighborhoods. Assistant Chief Sorenson, Fire Marshal David Fabuk. Fabuk?
Good evening, Mayor and Council and City Leadership. My name is Dane Sorenson. I am the Assistant Chief over our Field Operations Division, so essentially patrol. I'm here tonight with Fire Marshal David Fabuk. And we're here to give you a presentation about fireworks in Tempe. Basically, it's going to be, cover what's legal, what's illegal, our response to them, and what you can do to help mitigate some of the issues that we have surrounding fireworks. With that?
All right. We'll start off with a brief description of the type of fireworks and the use periods that are currently regulated by state law. So these are some examples of novelties. Novelties are non-regulated. They're defined as small devices containing limited amounts of pyrotechnic or explosive composition. They provide a visible or audible effect. These don't jump off the ground. They don't explode. They basically stay in their, in their, where they're lit. All right, next one we have are the consumer fireworks. These are permissible for use and sale under state law. Consumer fireworks are defined as small firework devices containing restricted amounts of pyrotechnic composition, designed primarily to produce a visible or audible effect by combustion. Examples, we've got some of these here, cylindrical fountains, cone fountains, illuminating torches, ground spinners. Again, like I said, the, the use and sale periods are defined by Arizona State Revised Statute. These, again, these will throw sparks. They will not go air, airborne. So, and then the last one we have here, these are actually fireworks. These are, shouldn't say consumer, but some consumer fireworks are illegal. But in this situation, fireworks are defined as large devices that are explosive material intended for use in firework displays and designed to produce visible, audible effects by combustion, deflagration, or detonation. These will go up in the air. They will explode. If not used properly, they'll go across the parking lot. Examples of these are firecrackers, bottle rockets, aerial spinners, roman candles, or anything that's, that will rise into the air and explode or detonate, or fly above the ground. So these are, these are, these are illegal, period, to sell, use, or possess in the state of Arizona. All right. So the sale of permissible consumer fireworks is allowed, as you can see here, at April 25th through May 6th, May 20th through July 6th, December 10th through January 3rd, two days before the first day of Dewali through the third day of Dewali each year. There we go. The times of day that these are, the use of consumer fireworks are prohibited, or is outlined here, with exception. So 11 to 8 on normal days, except for between the hours of 11, around New Year's Eve, they're permitted later, from 11 to 1 a.m., and 4th of July as well. So Arizona Revised Statute, Section 361606, regulates the type of fireworks that are permissible, as well as when they can be bought, sold, or used in Arizona. This state law supersedes the local fire code and is not subject to any further regulation by a government body currently.
All right. So for police response, the toughest thing about fireworks that you're going to see, that you're going to experience is very difficult to determine by the sound of fireworks, what's illegal, what's legal. And additionally, we understand that the community has a lot of concerns around fireworks, especially with some of our veterans that may be suffering from PTSD, people with pets. Every year, that's something that, that we hear as we respond to fireworks. But if you do suspect illegal fireworks, please call our non-emergency line. Don't, don't call 911. If you have an emergency, a 911 emergency, please call 911. So we will address the suspected illegal fireworks. But typically, these nights, especially the nights that Fire Marshal Fabuk talked about, 4th of July, New Year's Eves, they're some of our busier nights. We will prioritize. We will prioritize crimes against people, violent crime, things like that, over firework response. But we will eventually, or if their calls for service allow, immediately respond to the fireworks as we can. We are going to have extra personnel working that night specifically to deal with the fireworks. So as those calls come in, which they inevitably will, we will be able to triage that and deal with the most serious ones as, as they come along. So with fireworks, we can issue warnings and we can also cite common misconception. It's just a citation. There is no, it's not a crime for, it can't be something that somebody can go to jail for that night. And there is an up to a $1,000 civil penalty with Tempe City Code 14-51. That's pretty good, but it's still just a civil citation. And the hard thing about fireworks is, legal or illegal, the evidence is typically burned up by the time we get there. That's the hard part, right? And we still have to find witnesses, people that are willing to come forward, say that this was the person that did it. And then we have to be able to identify that it wasn't illegal firework. With that being said, still, we will do an investigation. And if it's appropriate, we will cite or warn somebody that's using illegal fireworks or doing them at the wrong times. And with that, we do have additional information and resources if you visit our website, tempe.gov/fireworks. Additionally, our non-emergency line is 350-8311. And I do want to remind everybody, please watch out for your neighbors, watch out for your, your neighbor's pets. Just pay attention to what's going on in your neighborhood, because we all have to take care of each other. And if someone has issues surrounding fireworks, it's nice to take care of your neighbor. So with that, is there any questions?
Sounds good. Councilmember Hodge?
So, great presentation, very educational. That brings me to my point. It's education. That's what we can do. It's more about education. How to educate our, our neighbors on it. One of the things I was going to ask you is, is there a one pager? Because I just asked the same question the last one, that maybe we can put in our newsletter to help with the education part of it? Putting it out there so it can be something that we can say, this is what fireworks, especially with the holidays coming up for the, you know, New Year's Eve. Maybe, I don't know if I did mine yet, but we can still do it for 4th of July or next holidays. We can add that to our pager to help out. And also, Rosa, is there, is Ken, is Chris going to be able to put something out for like? Because I know, New Year's is coming for us to send out for the city.
Mayor, Councilmember Hodge, Chris Baxter does a great job of working with our staff all the time to just, we, we believe in over-communication, just reminding folks of all the rules and regs.
Also, can we also get that out to Shawna Warner to give to our neighborhoods associations?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brandberg?
Yes. My experience has been in our neighborhood, it's the same people every single year that are shooting off these giant fireworks. And I live in a horse community and the horses also get, you know, very scared along with their dogs and cats. And I'm just wondering if, if we could do something, knowing that they, they violate it every year, to have maybe a police officer handy during those time periods? Or just to try to stop it early on?
Yeah. I feel, I feel your pain. I grew up with horses. My mom still has horses. And she lives a little more rural, but very large fireworks where she's at. So I know, I understand that, yes, it's something that with our office community policing, we can maybe do a little bit of outreach before. And then with the, the night that that's coming, we can hopefully, and I can circle back with you at a later time. Or if we know, I don't know who, who the offenders are, but if we were able to find out people that have historically done things like this, maybe we could have a conversation. That's not a problem.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm just trying to prevent it from happening again.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brandberg?
Mr. Mayor, yes, thank you. As a dog owner, I've got five dogs, one of which that had terrible PTSD. And I would literally have to bring him down to the basement on two nights out of the year because he would go catatonic. I've still got scratches in my back window because unfortunately door, he was outside when the first one went off. And if he could have gone through that, that door, he would have gone through the door. But I'm going to think a little bit outside of the box. And I'm going to talk to Councilmember Hodge about this because I'm going to say something stereotypical that it's probably parents with kids that are doing a lot of this. So is there any way we could send information home through the high schools and the elementary schools? And not just focusing on what the legalities are, but focusing on the dogs and focusing on our veterans with PTSD.
I think that is something we definitely can do. That's part of the reason why I asked for the one pager, so we can have that. So I can, I can give that out to our schools and educate them on that. And also when our, send it home with our families in the neighborhood. So yes, that could be something we could do if we do.
Thank you.
Just one quick thing on my end. I really appreciate the presentation. One of the challenges that I want to make sure that our, for our residents watching right now, though, that they please understand, though, to be patient during this kind of time. Because one of the challenges, every time we have a situation like July 4th or New Year's Eve, I get tagged in tons of Facebook posts, you know, basically saying, you know, Mayor Woods, why are you not doing something to stop people from shooting off fireworks? But I appreciate, you know, Assistant Chief Sorensen, what you said. I mean, the challenge unfortunately in these situations is we're going to do everything we can from an education and enforcement standpoint to stop people from doing these things, whether it's disturbing the quality of their neighbors' lives, affecting veterans with PTSD, or affecting animals who obviously don't like these sounds and the loud booms. But at the same time, it's very challenging to either catch people in the actual act of doing this, or if they were doing it, get witnesses who can frankly speak to the fact that they were. Because many times, if people are doing it, it's folks who are kind of in the same household, who might be doing it together. And they're not then going to rat out the person that they were frankly doing it with 10 minutes earlier. So it does become very challenging. So, you know, for residents watching this, obviously, we're going to continue to do everything we can to inform people about the harms of this and why you shouldn't actually do it. And we will enforce when able to do it. But please understand, we're doing everything we can. But obviously, as you can imagine, it's very difficult to catch someone actually in the actual act of lighting a firework at the time. And once PD actually is called or responds, many times, as Assistant Chief Sorensen said, the evidence itself is already burned up. So once again, not trying to abdicate any responsibility, but just trying to speak to our, our residents who are watching this evening from a place of realism about the ability to actually enforce this, because it's very difficult to catch someone in that very moment. So I just wanted to make sure to put that out there. Yes, Councilmember Hodge?
Okay. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor. I was going to say something about both me and you at this time. So Vice Mayor and I were out and we were doing, we were doing, oh, I can't remember. We were at a neighborhood, what was it? Game Night. There we go. We're at Game Night. And we were close to Guadalupe and we got a lot of our, the constituents around there. So the reason why I'm bringing this back up is, how does that work when it's neighboring areas and that work, that, that situation? Because they kept, you know, and I know you guys hear this before. This is not something that's new. But we get it quite a bit, especially me, because I, because of my connection to it from the school district. So I was just wondering, how do you think we should handle that when that keeps coming? Because I do get that quite a bit.
Guadalupe is a unique challenge.
Yes, that's why. Yeah, I wanted to bring that out so if anybody's, our constituents are listening to it, that they understand a little bit.
Yeah. Guadalupe is a unique challenge. Any county island really is a unique challenge for us. Because as for the presentation, this is, we're using a Tempe City Code, which doesn't apply. And they are, the county islands and Guadalupe are contracted with Maricopa County Sheriff's Office. So all of that enforcement, all of that jurisdiction lies with Maricopa County Sheriff's Office. And they, I think they staff right now two deputies at night in Guadalupe. So they're kind of always behind the eight ball, responding to large volume calls for service with fireworks. So I'm sure it's, it's not something that we can really deal with. I do know that it affects us, but it's out of our jurisdiction and really not our, our place.
Yeah. And I, I just, I think I wanted that to be on record for everybody to understand that. Because they, I know they call our 911 and it hits our operators and it, you know, when they go out, it's, you know, we can't go in there and, and conduct without talking to their sheriff on it. So I just want, I guess I wanted that to be something that we said out loud. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Garland?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to mention the same thing that Councilmember Hodge just mentioned. They also told us when we were out in the community that they have those boom sounds, not just during 4th of July and New Year's, which is really frustrating and frightening for those families that live over there. But, you know, I wanted this, this presentation to be brought to council because it, every year we get, as, as the mayor said, we get the calls, we get the emails. It's like, why are you not there? Why have you not been able to get this to stop? You know, unfortunately, state law, you know, hand ties us on what we are able to do. And so having this presentation, I think we can at least talk to our residents about what we are able to do and that we are doing our best. But we, you know what, we need the eyes and ears of our community to be able to help us also. But also to be checking on your neighbors in the community before, during, and after this event. The, we all know our neighbors well enough, or we should, that we know the ones that might be having trouble or might be struggling. And so I just think it's an opportunity for us to, to reach out to our community and to our, our residents and our neighbors and, and to talk to them and, you know, again, report when you can. And, you know, thank you again for the presentation. I think this is really important for us to be discussing this right now.
Sounds good. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else? Any additional further comments, questions? All right, wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you.
Okay. One quick thing that I typically do not do, but I wanted to allow it just this one time this evening. I did get a card here for item 3C. And I know all of the audience had already closed, but I wanted to, just for, just for this evening, just reopen it, just to let someone have an opportunity to speak. I can't quite read the last name, but I know the first name here is Chloe. If you'd like to come forward and speak on that item, and you'd have three minutes, just please state your name and city of residence.
Hello. My name is Chloe Kansas. I'm an ASU student. And I work here in Tempe with homeless outreach organizations. I wanted to talk to you guys about your recent announcement to start enforcing Tempe City Code 2390.
Quick thing, like before you go, is that technically on the agenda this evening? I want to make sure that it, Mr. City Attorney?
Mayor, that, that item is not on the agenda, so, yes.
So yeah, it would have, it would have to be about an item that's actually on the agenda this evening specifically, so.
Well, it's related to housing, right? And it's related to the housing analysis that was on item 3C.
Okay, I've got to look to my City Attorney again on.
Yeah, as long as it's reasonably related to the item.
Okay.
Yeah. So I wanted to talk about the announcement to enforce that city code, which either fines a person $2,500 or, you know, or they can be charged with up to six months in jail for urban camping, you know, for basically for being homeless. And I wanted to speak on that and how that's a very costly mistake for the city of Tempe. And I also think it's, you know, also not only bad for your budget, but for the soul of the city. And I wanted to talk some numbers. So the typical, or the amount of homeless residents in Tempe varies anywhere between 150, or sorry, like the late hundreds to 200 homeless residents. But you only have 40 shelter beds. And in that announcement, you said that people would get a warning before they get charged. But, you know, if they have nowhere to go and all the shelter beds are full, then they, they got nowhere to go. They're going to end up getting charged and they're going to end up spending six months in jail. And, you know, and, and that's going to be extremely expensive. You have the cost for the intake of Maricopa County Jail is $642. And every additional night is another $137, you know, so for six months in jail, that's, it's very costly to, to do that. And if we're going to, you know, we, we saw it there on item 3C, the, the cost, the minimum wage here in Tempe to get a studio apartment is $26 an hour, you know. And so what we're saying there is, if you aren't making $26 an hour, not only do you not deserve to rent an apartment, but you're also a criminal, you know. And that's, I, I, and I don't think that's something the residents of Tempe agree with. And I don't think that's where they want their city to go. And I think continuing on this path is going to cost the city of Tempe millions of dollars that otherwise it could avoid doing. And so I would move to.
I'll give you another 15, since I stopped you, so I'll give you another 15 seconds, so.
So I, I would move to either repeal or amend Tempe City Code 2390 to decriminalize homelessness and find a different, a different way to deal with this problem. Because I don't think the residents of Tempe want it to be done in this way. Thank you.
So, thank you. All right. I'll go ahead and close then the public hearing portion again, or the call to the audience portion, I should say. Which then brings me to, the next item on the agenda is the Call to the Audience for Committee of the Whole Items. There are no items listed on this section of the Agenda for Council Consideration this evening. So I will close that and move to the next, which brings me to item number five, Committee of the Whole. So per City Council Rule 7, subsection 2B, any two members of the council may propose the formation of a subcommittee at a work-study session of the council by identifying the purpose of the proposed subcommittee and the proposed members of the subcommittee, and obtaining approval of the majority of the council. So are there any two council members who have a proposal for a new council subcommittee at this time? All right, none. That means I will move to, let's see here. Item 5B, I guess I should say. I'm assuming Mr. City Attorney, not 5A. It's a little bit, we've changed the agenda around, but I wish I'm following things, right? So I'm on 5B now? Not 5A?
Mayor, I believe that's correct.
That is correct. I wanted to, I just wanted to make sure.
The clerk is the official agenda.
Ooh, okay. Seating is with the clerk? I love it, huh, Madam Clerk?
Yes. So you did request if there were any proposals for new subcommittees. So the next one is if there's any existing subcommittees who have verbal updates.
Just wanted to make sure. We, we're tweaking some things on the agenda. Wanted to make sure I was following things appropriately. So, so next up is item 5B. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council Subcommittee Status Updates or Recommendations for Council Direction. Are there any council members who have any verbal updates this evening regarding your council subcommittees? All right, seeing none? Mike?
So when you ask about council recommendations, I just want to be clear, is that something that we want to put onto? Or is it just about our committees?
So 5, 5A was basically saying if you'd like to propose another one. If any two members want to propose a new council subcommittee, 5B is if you have any verbal updates regarding your existing council subcommittees. Okay, wonderful. Thank you. All right then. That brings me to item 6, Future Agenda Items. Members of the City Council may request that an agenda item be added to a future issue review session. But in accordance with the open meeting law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request, Councilmember Hodge.
Now, that's what I was trying to get.
There we go, all right.
I would like to recommend that we have a update on pre-K. We haven't had one for a while, the enrollment, you know, the curriculum, what's going, just generalized annually update on it.
Mayor, Councilmember Hodge, we'd be glad to.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Hodge. Thank you, Madam City Manager. Any other future agenda items that council members would like to have added to a future issue review session? And Vice Mayor Garland, you good?
I am good, Mayor. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Okay, then I will close that portion of the agenda, which brings me to item number seven here, announcements from the mayor and/or city manager. I don't have any announcements this evening. Madam City Manager?
Mayor, no announcements this evening.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. I'll close that item as well, which brings me to item number eight, Adjournment. The next scheduled work-study session will be on January 16th, 2025. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.